Okay, it's now seven thirty. Your call to the meeting is ordered. If everyone would please rise. Stay standing after we have the invitation by Mr. Henry. Mr. Henry?
Thank you, Reverend, for the presence and service. For people in this city, Reverend Father, we ask you to verify God's law here in this city. Lord, we just ask you to be with our city for us, Lord, and keep us safe. Carry out the duties of their required duty, the city. Lord David, the ones that sinned in our city, and we are the ones that you gave. Supplied food and received food. The Lord has taken for all the servants, for all our servants here. He will take you to give his message to the rest of the city.
I would like to leave this in the black of the United States of America. And to the Republic on which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and moral.
You may be seated. Roll call.
Crable. Kelly.
Here.
Henry.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Kelly.
Here.
Laura.
Here.
Cole.
Here.
Mr. Crable was absent, but just with us. I'm afraid we need to excuse him. Have a motion in second. All favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Approved minutes of April sixteenth, two thousand twelve.
Second.
Of a motion in second. All favor say aye. Minutes have been approved. Questions with an appointment? There are none. Special orders in committee? No, no, no. Petitions and communications?
First, seeing them all, um, it's together. It counts as below according to the accounts of the time of day. In accordance with chapter nineteen, law twenty-eight, of workman's thirty-seven thousand six. This information is submitted to council, and we will be the auditor for the meeting.
Mr. President. Mr. Marra. I'd like to motion forward the question to the moderator. Have a motion in second. Any discussion? None. Roll call.
Nethley.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Kelly.
Yes.
Laura.
Yes.
Cole.
Yes.
Okay, it's been approved. Next communication petition, uh, second.
It's from the Red Division of Liturgy Control. We got our own stop license for Thompson and King. We're on sixty-seven Euphrain Road. People have school three of classes.
Mr. President.
Mrs. Cole.
I'd like to make a motion to request that we not have a hearing on this.
Have a motion in second to not request a hearing. Any discussion? Not roll call.
Nethley.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Kelly.
Yes.
Laura.
Yes.
Cole.
Yes.
Motion has been approved. There are seconded.
Notice from the current position of the big colored guardian. A transfer from C. Lebock, eleven seventeen Euphrain Road, people have school three of classes. To Blue Beach, Cal MLC, eleven seventeen Euphrain Road, people have school three of classes.
Mr. President.
Mrs. Cole.
I'd like to make a motion to request that we not have a hearing on this one as well.
Have a motion in second. Any discussion? Not roll call.
Kevin.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Kelly.
Yes.
Laura.
Yes.
Cole.
Yes.
That motion has been approved.
Mr. President.
Mrs. Cole.
I'd like to make a motion to receive a wire off communications.
Have a motion in second. Communications, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Now we come to the time for visitors to speak. If visitors like to speak, approach the podium, state your name and address, and how your concern.
Wayne Midwood, sixteen eleven Euphrain Road. I just wanted to step forward here and thank Mr. Heffley and the council for the privilege of serving on the Charter Review Committee. Thanks very much. Thank you.
Thank you, Goodwin. This is sixteen eleven Euphrain Road. First of all, dear brothers and sisters, I'm calling for a hearing. I'm calling here. Just tell me what you want. Um, pressed by having our youngsters here tonight, this is great, I love it. Good luck to you guys, and if I can, I'd like to sit in on there, counsel. Um, I too would like to thank Mr. Heffley for appointing the right to be in the Charter Review Commission. And I know you've all heard your in the comments, but, um, I personally sat in on two of the meetings and didn't say anything. I just sat back and watched the entire process. And as a citizen, being on the side I was, I'm sort of disappointed with the process. Um, lack of commitment to be there. Um, just felt that everybody was in a hurry, you know? It was time to discuss things, and it was always in a hurry. I just wanted you to know that even though we appreciate the time that we got to spend with it, and understand it, learn it, and be here with it. It was a privilege to do that. But we're not done, and we still want to see that improvement of our earnings, or this improvement of our communications to our city. And I think most of us really want that. Um, so I guess our next step will be back, but our next step is to come back to the stuff with you and ask you to come to a conclusion or some kind of issue. Get more information to our city. There are people asking for it, and I, you know, some say why aren't they here? I don't know why they're not here, but I can tell you why I wasn't here for a while. I had six kids we were raising at home. I was probably in business trying to keep up with what the city of heat was throwing at us at the time. So my twelve years here at heat has been more of a struggle as a citizen than before when I used to come to heat all my life. So I'm here because I am passionate about the city. I do like my city, and I want things to be better. If you haven't seen that by my attendance here, I don't know what else I can express to you, but I've been coming here since before I walked. And I'd like to share that by saying my parents spent their first night across the street in a local hotel in nineteen fifty-nine. Okay? I've been coming to heat all my life. The favorite old steakhouse down the road that is no longer was his favorite place to heat. My father died in nineteen eighty-five at age forty-six, and he was working in the city of heat. I spent a lot of my life toying around with him in a delivery truck that went to several locations. And I can almost pinpoint some of the old buildings that we used to saw had Woolworths, Rants, Southland Lounge. I remember that place. I mean, these are places I went with my dad at five, six years old. So I do care about the city. I want to see good improvements. I want to work with the mayor. He knows that. And I want to be able to talk to all of you anytime. Thank you.
Any other people who'd like to speak? Have your opportunities you'd like to say something? Whatever you have, just get up and say it.
The draw is drawn.
All right. You'll have your opportunities to do a lot of speaking, uh, come Thursday, Friday, and especially Friday. Uh, seeing all of the visitors, we'll move on to committee reports, finances and budget. Mrs. Cole.
Thank you, President. My names and budgets met tonight at six forty-five. We had four legislative requests on our agenda. The first was to authorize the disposal of a nineteen ninety-seven Ford F seven hundred dump truck to the water department. Second legislative request was to appropriate twenty-one thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars to the wastewater replacement fund for engineering. We're replacing Fox Run Lift Station with a gravity sewer. Third legislative request was to appropriate one hundred sixty-four thousand seven hundred dollars with the wastewater replacement fund for the installation of the jet irrigation system. And the fourth legislative request was for the bike path to repair legislation of twenty thousand dollars, which led me to the board authority bridge. Um, there was some concerns, some discussion about what would happen if the water was higher than it was last time, but for now we need to repair it. And, um, we'll address that in another way if that does happen. We have two other items on the agenda. The first was loss of income charts. Auditor Alexander provided us with charts showing declining revenues for the city of heat. The state income tax, inheritance tax is going away in two thousand thirteen, and, um, we will lose some significant back of money there. We are also losing some of the funding and local government funding. Um, the percentage that we receive from state is declining. And it looks like overall we're losing, um, in two thousand eleven, we had a total of one hundred sixty-three thousand seven hundred and sixty-seven dollars. And that's going to be going down in two thousand twelve, thirteen, two thousand fourteen, into the ninety thousands. So this is significant loss for the city. The second item on the other items is city income surplus option will be held on June ninth at ten a.m. in Yellow Park. They'll be auctioning off accounted vehicles, bicycles, and items from the evidence room. Do you have anything else on your own, Senator?
Nothing there.
Anything to Mr. Gallagher, and then none of this time. That's all for finance. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mrs. Cole. Before I move on to the next committee reports, this is for your students after our debate. When, on Thursday, each one of you that's a councilperson will be one of these chairs. So why don't you be chairman of the finance and public service, public safety, all that kind of stuff. So as you hear how she just gave her report and she called on other members, you'll do the same thing. You'll give a report. Each councilperson up here will have a prepared report to give to you on Thursday. And then you can modify it a little bit how you want, but then when you get done with the report, you'll ask whoever the student is that'll be sitting in these other chairs and stuff. You'll ask them for a report, and they'll have the report to give. Whereas tonight, Mrs. Gallagher did have anything, but in your case, there will be a report. Hopefully they'll have something to report. If you just hear, if we go through, just kind of visualize it, so it's a lot easier on Thursday when we go through it, and then on Friday there will be some more for you. That's just a talking point. Make my job a little easier on Thursday. Uh, public services. Mr. Marra.
Thank you, Mr. President. Andrew, bring Kate. That's all because the type is really good. The Public Service Committee meeting was called for at five thirty coming out on April twenty-third. John Gallagher, utilities director, presented the length of the length of the count. A legislative request was discussed under wastewater. Sewer backup policy was discussed. Yes, speakers were Doug Brookhart, former heat utilities director and law director, Nate Morrison. Mr. Brookhart currently represents Jones and Henry Engineering and talked about other city policies, uh, dealing with sewer backup. Following comments, Mr. Gallagher was asked to defer with Mr. Morrison and present the committee with a policy to review. The department is working on specifications to bid the installation of the jet irrigation system, uh, through our digest. Preliminary estimates were one hundred and eighty thousand dollars for equipment, fifty-six thousand dollars for installation. Mr. Gallagher then gave a Fox Run Lift Station update. The removal could be a two thousand thirteen project, and the wastewater replacement fund could be used. The wastewater sludge, sludge removal is continuing. Lastly, sludge could be used on farmland for a, um, detention tanks, uh, were, have been painted. Mr. Gallagher then discussed what was official. We received the Ohio Public Works Commission fifty, five hundred forty-three thousand three hundred eighty dollars in benefits and two hundred and fifty thousand dollar grants. And that was two hundred, two hundred eighty, two hundred ninety-five thousand three hundred eighty dollars and zero percent interest money. Franklin Avenue Waterline and Pump Station project updates were given. This will be open May sixteenth. Policy for employee suggestions was presented. Finally, the major fund balances were presented and discussed. With no further business to continue, the meeting was adjourned to seven eleven p.m. Anything else, John?
Yeah, I have one employee directly done. It's, uh, Mark Stevens, and has five years with the city now. Uh, he's at the wastewater department and does an excellent job. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you. Public safety, Mr. Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Public safety will be Monday, May fourteenth at five thirty p.m. Chief, uh, check with the head of Indiana. Those, uh, chief shepherd is keep hiding. No?
Thank you. Streets and drainage, Mr. Heffley.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Streets and drainage will begin May twenty-first at five thirty p.m. Paul Gallagher.
Yes, Chris Lawson is celebrating nineteen years with the city.
Thank you. Committee vote, zoning, Mr. Henry.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, this committee met tonight at last thirty p.m. And Mr. John Rock gave us, uh, seven items. It was project update, project success progress now. Number one was the Route seventy-nine project. It's on this at the east side. The new street intersections are operational now. The one that overdrive and handing over is the one that gradient and cut. All the lights are installed, cameras are working, and they're for speed too. Uh, something I asked at this week, they could speed or intercept. We had that camera less secure. John, I would say just allow the left turn, like, if you allow, you have a second lane to relax.
Right.
Another, uh, another side, and waiting to modernize and install and view. You can see the work in progress right now. And Mr. Hope has said, oh, God is managing those change orders to the east. So this is management in a way that the state and the federal government are playing for our part in the change. And we do appreciate that. The other project is a Thornwood Fault project. And it's three, and it is the highest landfall, you know? One, the canvas, court authority gave you last city property. The other project was sold, uh, sold for three hundred dollars. The other ones in the process, the legal process, to foreclosure, so it's been hard to take the legal. That's been, I don't think that they are carrying the knife. We will pick it back. And when the project is bid out, and what we did in July, and when the start of project, Thornwood Drive would be closed for fourteen twenty-one days. And they reject the project to start in August. And Thornwood Paying Agreement is moving along in the early, in the early stages, and, uh, it's just fading, and I think that's going to be done in two thousand fifteen. Fourth is the maybe also moving along, um, the city is getting along, which is fine. And that project will be done in thirteen. Hopewell Bridge project should be completed by the school opening this fall. And, uh, number two, the holiday end, uh, it's, it's holiday end expressed, it's expected to reopen in a month. And they're moving on with that. That's good, and hopefully we want to open soon. You think government, this is coming Friday. The property on the wrap lane, it's all done, it's preparing. He's slowly getting things cleaned up on it. It's kind of bad, but it's been a problem for a long time. That one is doing a good job. And developer prospects, uh, to give us some of these, and, you know, with a Carter Lumber Company, so it's looked here at South seventy-nine. We stopped there, people said that Collins Furniture moved in there. And also up in, uh, Ross Creek Shopping Center, including honorable vendors, TJ Maxx. I have a slipware that's going to be on the building there. I don't have the square footage, but we can, and it's a pretty good size. Ross Creek Thriller. Man, move the shit out of this. And Altrum, Al, Al, Alton Cosmetics is coming in to the Indian Mountain Mall area near Dix. That's, that's, that's a quick process. And the Carrot Branded is under construction there. Carol coming. Happy three of us located on here, close, that cost some, uh, gas station here on the corner. It's coming along. It should be open soon. And, uh, the Black Matt Bridge with the air certification that you were there talking about, though, is to be repaired by a set job. Get other ways to get it repaired, but the estimates were cost by twenty thousand. You have to, that's not being replaced, it's some pay when they prepare. The rain comes from the outside of there, because that, remember, that's silk that has to be reopened. And the lots near the river, the outside, and they've got to be replaced. And we went into executive section, having that. John, did I miss anything?
No, I was right, definitely. Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you. Parks Recreation, Davis Shade.
Mrs. Cole.
Thank you, Mr. President. Parks Recreation and Davis Shade will meet, um, on Monday, May twenty-first, immediately following streets and drains. Do you have any add-on?
Nothing.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Planning Commission, this is Mr. Crable, who's absent. I'll call Mayor Gallagher.
Thank you, Mr. President. Planning Commission, uh, met on Thursday, April twenty-sixth. It was one hundred on the agenda. It was a lot split, uh, lot split. Uh, at the property address eighteen ninety-eight Blue Jay Road. That lot split was unanimously approved after discussion, um, after some general discussion and board city officials meeting, Mr. John.
Mr. Rock, you mean that?
Okay.
Thank you. Now we come to introduction of ordinances. Ordinance thirty-four, two thousand twelve.
Please thirty-four, two thousand twelve, ordinance authorizing appropriation of not fifty thousand dollars until the county's approval. They're just wanting to give us credit system for the order.
Mr. President.
Mrs. Cole.
I'd like to make the motion that we waive the second reading on ordinance thirty-four, two thousand twelve.
Have a motion in second to waive. Roll call.
Nethley.
Yes.
Henry. Johnson.
Yes.
Kelly.
Yes.
Laura. Yes.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Okay, yes. Uh, Mr. President.
Mrs. Cole.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt ordinance thirty-four, two thousand twelve.
Have a motion in second. Any discussion? If, uh, roll call.
Nethley.
Yes.
Henry. Johnson.
Yes.
Kelly.
Yes.
Laura.
Yes.
Yes.
Ordinance thirty-four, two thousand and twelve is better adopted. Ordinance thirty-five, two thousand twelve.
Ordinance thirty-five, two thousand twelve, ordinance authorizing appropriation of not fifty thousand dollars until the county's approval. For this one trailer for Fox Park.
Mr. President.
Mrs. Cole.
I'd like to make a motion that we waive the second reading on ordinance thirty-five, two thousand twelve.
Have a motion in second to waive. Roll call.
Nethley.
Yes.
Henry. Johnson.
Yes.
Kelly.
Yes.
Laura.
Yes.
Cole. Yes.
Motion waived and approved.
Mr. President.
Mrs. Cole.
I'd like to make a motion that we adopt ordinance thirty-five, two thousand twelve.
Have a motion in second. Any discussion? It's not. Roll call.
Nethley.
Yes.
Henry. Johnson.
Yes.
Kelly.
Yes.
Laura.
Yes.
Cole. Yes.
Ordinance thirty-five, two thousand twelve is better adopted. Ordinance thirty-six, two thousand twelve.
Ordinance thirty-six, two thousand twelve, ordinance authorizing appropriation of not fifty thousand dollars to the general fund. Check on the construction services, the best for the second agency act.
Ordinance thirty-six, two thousand twelve, we have the second reading. Ordinance thirty-seven, two thousand twelve.
Ordinance thirty-seven, two thousand twelve, ordinance waiving the bidding signature, authorizing a direct to the mayor's land sale of one nineteen ninety-seven Ford F seven hundred. Dump truck, gas, engine, of the water department.
Ordinance thirty-seven, two thousand twelve, we have the second reading. All the ordinances on the first reading, ordinances on the second reading, ordinance thirty-two, two thousand twelve.
Ordinance thirty-two, two thousand twelve, and we're going to provide the appropriate six thousand dollars to the law post, the festival. For materials and supplies to purchase ammunition, or please to farm.
Mr. President.
Mr. Johnson. Would you make a motion that we adopt ordinance thirty-two, two thousand twelve?
Second. Have a motion in second. Any discussion? None. Roll call.
Henry.
Yes.
Henry. Johnson.
Yes.
Kelly.
Yes.
Laura.
Yes.
Cole. Yes.
Ordinance thirty-two, two thousand twelve is better adopted. Before I move on, as a teaching point for Thursday and for Friday, when you guys do, you'll have different ordinances, of course, than what we had. But instead of when I ask for discussion, you guys hopefully will have discussion back and forth, okay? And, uh, instead of everyone, like in this case, everything is approved, I, you know, down the line. Hopefully, some of you will vote no on it, and maybe defeat some ordinances, maybe some will pass. And they, we've had it, every year we have it every, every different which way, and sometimes it'll be seven oh, true, seven oh against, or four, three, and five, three. Well, that's a different scenario, so just keep that in mind if you're watching us. Uh, we've pretty much just gone over these ordinances and things at the practice room over there, and we know how we're going to vote when we get here and stuff. So usually everything is pretty, that drive to this, but in your case, you guys will be going here, battling at the actual case here. Okay, moving on to resolutions. So first reading are done. Resolution, so second reading. Resolution two thousand twelve, actually.
Resolution two thousand twelve, two, the resolution, but local budgeting foundation fund, grant for void benefit consortium.
Mr. President.
Mrs. Cole.
I'd like to make a motion that we adopt resolution two thousand twelve dash two.
Have a motion in a second. Any discussion? None. Roll call.
Nethley.
Yes.
Henry. Johnson.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
Laura.
Yes.
Cole. Yes.
Resolution two thousand and twelve dash two has been adopted. Mr. Johnson, report to city officials. Mayor Gallagher.
Thank you, Mr. President. I welcome the wonderful attendance, particularly, uh, Jake Wiers, who is the Indiana Youth Government here at the end of the week. Um, to me today, raise your hand, please, if you're going to be one of the councilmembers. Okay. Um, what, what, do you know what position you're going to be? Clerk? Oh, council, okay, all right. Um, make sure, uh, make sure, uh, Lynn, we're just kind of... Um, make sure, uh, make sure, uh, Lynn, would you just kind of help introduce yourself to them? Talk to them a little bit about what you do prior to this. And, uh, let's see, are you gonna be the law director? Is that right? Okay. I think you have to make sure your students are here, if you want, okay? Uh, it's, uh, looking forward today, um, it's great for us as local government officials to see, uh, our jobs through the eyes of faith leaders. And, uh, as Mr. Kelly, um, has said, in past meetings, it's been interesting to see how, uh, the dynamic plays out up here among the council members, as there's an ordinance, uh, that's proposed, that some are for and some are against. Uh, you can see some, some pretty lively debates, uh, take place, and, uh, hopefully, as, as Mr. Kelly said, maybe we can see a little bit of that layout here also. Becky, you were asking about, uh, being able to attend, the public is absolutely welcome, uh, to attend their meeting. Uh, they, uh, the way that it works is on Friday during the morning, we pick the students up, and there's different groups, and, uh, you may have gotten, I think, a schedule of that. Okay, so we take the groups of different departments in the city. And then, uh, the entire eighth grade class, uh, comes out to the fire station one for lunch, that's, uh, that John Geller, uh, organizes the heat lines, uh, helped to, uh, put that on along with the help of, uh, McDonald's. And, uh, if you're interested in volunteering for that, please see John, okay? I think they can only use some, some extra hands. And then after that lunch, uh, the group comes here, not, I think everybody comes here, but, uh, people who are participating, uh, in the actual city council demonstration, come back here for, uh, for that mock council meeting, so. Kind of gives you the, the outline of the day's events, and, uh, you're more than welcome to, uh, to, to attend.
Thank you.
Um, I want to make sure that, uh, that all of you here are aware of the difference maker, uh, event this year. Park National Bank has been courageous enough in the past to, to host this event, and it recognizes, uh, an individual in the, uh, that does a lot, uh, for the community. Uh, in the past, that has been a breakfast meeting. This year, it's actually going to be a luncheon at the David Shea House. It is on the sixteenth of May. Uh, if you're interested in attending, please contact Judy, not at the Park National Bank branch, uh, there in South Gate. Um, I would encourage you to try to contact her as soon as possible, uh, so that you can RSVP and attend if you're, if you're interested enough. Um, and also, I want to make sure that, that all of you also put on your calendars. Uh, our annual Memorial Day, uh, uh, remembrance event. When, uh, when I became mayor, the first year that we had it was at, uh, a concourse in the, uh, Indian Mountain Mall. And although I certainly have nothing against Indian Mountain Mall, it did seem, uh, an appropriate venue for that type of event. So last year, working with the, uh, American Asian Coast, we hosted the event, the base of the bill, uh, at Geller Park. We encouraged people to, uh, to rent lawn chairs. Uh, we did have attentive chairs for those who wanted to keep out of the sun, but it was, uh, a, a well-intended event compared to previous year of mall. This year, I think we're going to host an event that is an equally appropriate event within the city, which is at the airport at the, uh, location of the F four Phantom. Uh, as some of you may know, uh, Mr. Roth, while serving, uh, in, during Vietnam War flew, uh, in that F four Phantom. So this year's Memorial Day, uh, remembrance is gonna begin at five thirty, uh, on Memorial Day, uh, at the, uh, at the airport, so I would, uh, welcome all of you, uh, to, uh, to attend. That, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Auditor Alexander. Thank you, Mr. President. I too want to welcome everybody in attendance, and, uh, I wonder if, uh, auditor, if you elect Sidney Tucker is, uh, okay, I'll track her down later on, and, uh, always enjoy you from the garden. I guess that concludes library parks. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Lograder.
Thank you, Mr. President. I welcome everyone too. This is in my first year as, uh, law director, my partner is a law director, first year. And, uh, I will not be, and, uh, in the government on Friday, because my son's graduated from law school, I stand that. So, uh, I'm going to talk to my partner, see if he'll, uh, volunteer to, you know, fix somebody in court.
Not for bad reason.
Well, I don't think. But, uh, I've discussed whether that, uh, he enjoys doing that, if he can, I'm sure. I'd also like to report that the Charter Review Commission has completed its work for a decade. This time, it recommends two amendments to the charter, that I don't know what the government done in the past thirty years, but, uh, it's worked time, uh, since I've been here, that charter review. Um, five of the seven members of the commission have signed the recommendations. I expect to present them with the, uh, with the next council meeting. The first recommendation is to amend the charter to provide that any vacancy at the office of mayor will be filled in the same manner as vacancies at the office of law. Uh, it will just be the system, uh, and that means that if, uh, the mayor resigns or becomes unable to serve or dies, then, uh, the city council will just elect, uh, the mayor to serve for the remainder of the term. The second is to amend the charter to require publishing, uh, proposed legislation on the internet, sit along with, uh, the way it's already being updated. Those who need to change. Good for you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Um, so got that, Mr. Tucker.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to, uh, let you, you know, here. I just want you to know that, uh, some of you saw right in that group, the dog is ready, we're meeting today, it was, uh, the ordinance, that's nice, yeah. You did it very well, we're gonna do it for our, for the, for the, for the, but, uh, as I have seen, also, as, uh, President Johnson said, there's some good faces along the path. And, uh, one other thing I'd like to, uh, mention, which was, uh, comments about introducing, I just want to, uh, show what it is. This is wrong, been around for a long time, all being, uh,
Thank you.
Mr. Murray.
Thank you, Mr. President. Welcome to the eighth graders, showing you Thursday and Friday, uh, Mark Stevens, congratulations on his five years.
Thank you. Mr. Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Big huge, big, great, dear comments. Thank you, dear students, thanks for coming. For a lot of, uh, for the opportunity to be involved in giving down, and I had a lot to, a lot of, so, I'm glad we're just gonna have a really good time. So congratulations on, it's, uh, you, you, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. President. I also want to welcome everyone, particularly these are government participants, and I just want to say that, uh, I really like the ratio of female and male representatives here. So I think you all stay focused and enthusiastic when you're supposed to, and believe the city of heat, maybe you can change the balance up here. Anyway, that's all I have, thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Grant.
Thank you, Mr. President. I do, uh, very well. And I did pick five out of your mates, very good. Teacher.
Hey.
You may put it up.
Look at him, he looks just sad, curse. You got it in March. Maybe take back, and, uh, not being in February of two thousand thirteen, I'll be even for fifty years, that's longer, I'll live in any place in my whole life. I enjoy it very much, and, uh, Jim, I think he does like two, three, four years. Does, um, play my job, I appreciate that. He did a good job when I was president, God, he's good. And I put that good seat, I'll do my brave again, Mark. I'm okay too, but, you do a super job. You gotta go out, good staff, you got a good seat, and you guys come back to the real thing, get your education, make sure you, and, I thank you.
Uh, starting down below with the guy that just had a birthday yesterday, Mr. Johnson, I've had a birthday yesterday.
Dr. Van. I just don't want to be quiet.
All right, we'll move on to TV Shepherd.
My partners. I don't want to be quiet.
Well, you're in this side, uh, let's start with Bob Geller for a start. You have Geller?
I want to welcome everybody here today. I remember when I was in youth, I never, that's been a long, long time ago, so, but it's very, it's enlightening, I think it's a good experience for the students. And I want to recognize Don Geller for thirty-two years of service at the city.
Don Geller. Uh, I guess, yeah, nineteen seventy is when I was in youth, uh, so I can tell you kind of how old I am, but I was on council. We had a good time, and this, that shows you how long this has been going on, and that, that are some of the people up here, I'm sure, uh, have been in youth government with the city, and Jeff Creighton too. It's kind of neat to see the progression of, you know, during youth in government, you know, graduating from school, or high school, and you come back and you get involved. That's one of the biggest things about this whole program, is that hopefully someday, you guys will really be sitting and helping the community and so forth, so. That's all I can say, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, just a couple remarks that John mentioned, yeah, I was in youth of government one year behind John, because John was one year ahead of class, school. Uh, and when I was in youth of government, I was a council member, and the person that drove me around on youth of government day was actually John's dad, Ted Geller, he was on council at the time, and he later became mayor, he, and stuff, so. You see the kind of progression and stuff, and, uh, so, I'm on council as youth of government, and I'm on council now, and just happened this year I'm council president and stuff, so. I guess that's something you can look forward to, or maybe it's a good thing or a bad thing, depending on how you look at it. Looking forward to working with you on Thursday. Uh, we'll have a good time Thursday. Uh, I think it'll help you tremendously that you were here, and you got to see how it flows, and then, uh, the last two years, uh, the students weren't able to attend one of our council meetings just because of timing and stuff, and so. It was a little harder for them, I think, to kind of get the feel of it, but since you were here tonight, and the people that weren't here, that are on council or whatever, you can, you know, kind of explain them a little bit, it'll help a little bit, but, uh, we'll have a good time Thursday, we'll come over, uh, Thursday morning, pick you up, bring you over here, and start from there. Do any of you have any questions right now? And you want to, uh, or not, I don't know. No, I'm gonna make a prediction, right now, none of you has really said anything, and I guarantee that on Friday, we won't be able to get you to shut up. I've been doing this for, uh, I think this, we'll make my thirteenth year, I've been, uh, it was on every year, and there's never been a time, on Thursday, they don't say anything, on Friday, you can't. I shouldn't say words that, that. That's my prediction, now don't prove me wrong, you gotta prove me right on that. We want good lively debates and, uh, speaking, so, so, I look forward to that. Uh, let's see, can I find this question? Um, can you explain how you were chosen, selected, whatever, to, to participate at, at this level in, in youth of government? Can you, can you kind of explain that to us?
We asked for the name down on the paper, as what we wanted to be, and, um, because of the time, but you could put something down in the, um, there, but you thought, um, because, you know, they, you represent that position.
Okay. Okay. Okay, good. Um, was, uh, was everybody in your class afforded the opportunity to do this, or were only some of you afforded that opportunity?
Were you all allowed to, uh, process now, maybe?
And how does he feel about that selection process, do you know? Because I, I had heard that, um, I, I, I had heard that, that, that part of it was, you know, how good students you are, and, and that, uh, he feels as though you take, uh, you would take this process seriously, uh, and do a good job. Is, is that true? Is that part of this criteria, or was like that? He trusts you, so. Well, I think everyone here, I think, gets a round of applause for being able to participate, and having been selected to do so, so, I appreciate you guys being here. Just one other thing, too. Your teacher should be amended for the choices that he does, like, he's a great guy, work for, work for, we, I, I know, this is the third year back, uh, I'm, 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 I'm. Anyone else out there to say before we finish up? All right, uh, new business, none, reading bids, okay, what's reading bids? No, uh, Miss Laney's done, adjourned. A motion, second, I'll maybe say audits. We are adjourned.